We really appreciate you giving us this opportunity to, to really represent the town. I just hope that you give us wisdom as we do the business of the town. Look out for everyone that lives here in these things. We pray in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its accord.
I call the meeting to order and we will begin with public comments. I've got a couple folks that have signed up for.
They're on agenda items.
Gotcha. Any other folks signed up for public comments? All right. Consent agenda. House Counsel want to?
I'll move approval of consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any others? Thank you. All right. Agenda approval. I'd like to make an addition that we talk about council, technology, mostly purchases and what we use as a, as a tool for the town work.
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of item four.
The last one.
Council technology.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved as amended. All right. Next up on the agenda is chestnut median removal. Turn that over to Kevin. Go back to public comments.
Yep.
There is a hearing on the chestnut median and there's some speakers that would like to be heard, so we're going to move the public comments, open it back up to the gentlemen that are here to speak on the, on that issue, since there is no technically a public comments section in your piece, so.
Sure.
We'll switch it back up and go to, I have three folks signed up. First up on my sheet is John Short.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, in his absence, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for addressing this hazardous, dangerous and inconvenient medium on Chestnut Lane at the courtyards and Polte Development. Epcot attempted to resolve this issue during land development, but was unsuccessful. The 27 residents and their families and visitors has suffered the hazards, dangers and inconvenience of working around the medium. The neighbors, instead of walking into the new neighborhood, posted no trespassing, beware of dogs, no turnaround signs and many other things in their driveways and around the area. The medium was put in because of regulations because several problems, problems like three-point turns, U-turns, private drive U-turns, other development turnarounds and narrow and busy There was an incident where there was doing a turnaround at Red Barn and a neighbor came out and told the resident that we couldn't use that street for turning around. Residents even sending donations to Grace One Church because of having to use their turnaround. Delivery trucks knocking over signs, making ruts in the grass, many people ignoring the medium and going the wrong direction on the road. There are lots of tire marks and mediums where people cross. We've worked with Chief Franks, Stallings Police Department on the speeding and reckless driving issues because of the speeding and problems on the area. In checking the median, you'll see many tire marks across where people just ignore and cut back and forth. Several incidents of cars going and instead of going up, making this turnaround and coming back and turning into development, they'll come up to the median, no traffic coming, they'll cut over, go up the side and turn left in, almost a head-on there one day with someone coming out of the neighborhood. So there are issues there with that median, even though it was put in for regulations, it was still a problem. The last thing I want to say on the issue is that when the median gets out, sidewalks are being planned on the road, on the development across the street. We'll need a designated and marked crosswalk for our people to get to the sidewalks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I forgot, but when the public comments happen, when you address the podium, if you'd at least your name, list your name and your address, please.
I certainly will. Mayor, council members, my name is David Van Helmont. My address is 1109 Headwaters Court and I'm part of the development that's, we have highlighted up there. I'm briefly, briefly here to tell you about my observations, what I've seen in the short term that I've lived there. I moved there September 15th, 2023. One of them was one where I was going out and making a right-hand turn onto Chestnut. I looked to my left to make sure there was nothing coming down the hill, turned and all of a sudden I was confronted with a car coming right at me. That car dodged, went back over the median and got back on the other side of the road and made my heart beat a little bit, but, and there was no accident, but it was a little bit of a thrill. The other thing shortly after I moved in, about maybe two weeks later, people were trying to find their way around there and I followed a car out that turned right and he went down about 200 feet and pulled into and turned left into what appeared to be a driveway. And I drove on by him, I went down to Callenwood to turn around, I don't turn around in driveways, but as I looked in my rearview mirror, as he was pulling out, there were a couple cars barreling right on him. And there was no accident, but boy, that guy put himself in a bad position. And so those are a couple of things that I have seen. I would like a safe place to turn around. I don't like necessarily going into subdivisions. I do not like turning around in somebody's driveway. I found that I am using the church parking lot to turn around and come back. Like if I leave Harris Teeter, I go up the church parking lot, turn around and come back and I'm one of the people who sent the church a check. Basically, you know, I'm using private property and felt it was only fair that I should somehow compensate those folks. So I sent them a check and a note and note wasn't really acknowledged, but the check was cashed. But I, I'm happy to do that because it provides me and my family a safe place to turn around. And that's what's really necessary is, is safety, given the fact that our community is, probably has an average age of between 70 and 75, some a little bit younger, some older, like me. Anyway, that's all I have to say and thank you for your time and, and your consideration.
Thank you very much. And then I have one more. Pete DeMille.
Hi, my name is Peter DeMille. I live at 2035 Trail Wood Drive in the Sampson Division. I won't belabor the point, but just a couple of things. When you go in there, and I don't know if, I'm sure you've driven Chestnut, I have a lot of family, huge family, they live in Florida and up in New England. When they come here, the GPS does not take you to turn around, so it tells you to pull in and you can't pull in. So the visibility is very poor and it's kind of a, a turn where you can't see, especially in, there's no light, if it's foggy or if it's weather conditions. So people coming up to the point that was just mentioned and they are thinking they can turn in, people average about 45, 50 miles an hour on Chestnut, whether they should or not, they do. People are going to get rear-ended, there's going to be a bad accident. And the, the other thing I would say is on an environmental issue, everybody, including myself, is putting on extra miles every single day. So if I leave, there's no way I can either go out or come back without turning around. For me, it's roughly a mile. I've had the distinction, I lived in Brookhaven and I lived in Callenwood and my ex-neighbors are not happy campus either, they're not represented here because I don't think they really know about this, but the church, Red Barn, Callenwood, Brookhaven, they're all pretty unhappy about the situation. And then you add to us, it's not just the inconvenience of our home, the people across the street, now the 57 homes are going to have the exact same thing happen, just they're going to be turning a different way. And every UPS driver, every mailman, Amazon is putting on extra miles every single time they come in because depending on which way you come in, you got to go back out and turn around the other way to leave. So appreciate the opportunity to address you. Thank you very much for your attention to this matter.
Thank you very much for coming. All right. Now Kevin, chestnut median removal.
Appreciate all the background information. That's a helpful segue into a little bit of a history as to how that median got installed. And so just to put it in perspective, where, where this is exactly, so this big spot of, of land right here, that's the, the subdivision in question. It's fully built out now and actually we're getting ready to take that over here, here shortly. But just to the east over here is the Austin Village Shopping Center over here. And then yeah, over here to the west, the roundabout at Matthews, Matthews Weddington Road and Chestnut Lane. So right between Potter and Matthews Weddington Road is where this median is. And this is what that median looks like. So right here is the entrance into that new Epcot community. And so the reason that median was installed was, and again, here's the subdivision entrance, was that Epcot was supposed to install a left turn lane into the site under their original approved plans. However, I believe Mr. Short mentioned that there was a, they weren't able to get the right-of-way necessary to implement those turn lanes. And so NC DOT at the time still had concerns about the volume of traffic on Chestnut Lane and that possibly leading to some rear-end collisions from individuals turning left into this development. However, what NC DOT did not anticipate was vehicles acting the way they have been as outlined by the, the residents here tonight, leading to more inefficiencies and more issues when it comes to safety as well. And so that's ultimately what staff has been trying to address over the past several months. We've been coordinating with NC DOT, Indian Trail, Polte, who is developing a 57-home single-family subdivision right across the street from this. That's only going to be exacerbating this problem, as well as Epcot too, who constructed our, our stallings subdivision here, courtyards at Chestnut. And so as a result of those conversations, Epcot has agreed to contribute $20,000 towards the removal of this median. Polte has agreed to cover the difference. The total, right now, the total estimated cost is about $31,000. So right now, Epcot, $20,000, Polte, about $11,000 to split, to make up for the, that remainder there. We've gotten verbal agreement from NC DOT to remove the median. I'm just pursuing their encroachment agreement process at this time. And so that's, kind of plays into the, the two requests tonight. One, just receiving council's approval to remove the median itself. But two, I would like to request council for a budget allowance of about $20,000. And the reason I'm asking for that is because, as I mentioned, I'm going through that encroachment process with, encroachment agreement process with NC DOT. I'm waiting for their comments back. And so I did a kind of a worst-case scenario estimate on what I think an additional amount could be to appease NC DOT and their, and their approved scope. And I think that'll be about $20,000, which would increase that total project cost to about $51,000. So we still, we would still have the $31,000 covered by Polte and Epcot. However, worst-case scenario, I think an additional $20,000 might be needed to complete this median removal. And that being said, that's just an allowance, I'm just trying to plan for worst-case scenario. Once we get, if there is an increase in scope and cost, I would certainly reach out to Epcot and I'd reach out to Polte and I'd reach out to Indian Trail to see if we can do some more cost sharing to, to mitigate the expense to, to us, if at all. So again, two requests tonight, one to approve the median removal and two, to approve a, a budget allowance of up to $20,000. And as, as those negotiations happen, I'd be more than happy to come back with a report on, on the outcome of those negotiations. If you take any questions?
Thanks. No questions, but I've got a motion to make after talking to the mayor pro tem. I think it's reasonable. Wholeheartedly endorse removal of the median. It's the most inane traffic installation I've ever seen. I can't imagine living much longer there. So thank you guys for your patience and, and your work. It needs to go away and I'm thankful for Kevin's work and, and negotiating between the two builders. So yes, wholeheartedly endorse the removal of the, the Chestnut Lane median. After talking to the mayor pro tem, I think what we'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to do that. Endorse, coordinate the removal. I think the second part we would like to, before approving a budget ordinance or the, the funds, we'd like you to do what you just said. If, if the worst-case scenario is there's additional cost, first go to Polte, first go to Epcot. I don't think you'll get support from Indian Trail, but I would start with the private sector who benefits the most from this. And then if there's money that they won't cover, come back to us for a decision at that point. Does that make sense?
Sure. Yes, sir.
I think that'd make that motion. What was the first, the words of the first action?
Just council's approval of removal of the median itself.
I'll make that motion, then we can have some discussion if you like, but, but yeah, I'd make a motion to endorse the removal of the median. I'd also make a second motion that we receive a report back from you if there are additional costs that won't be borne by the private sector. Sure enough.
So motions, we'll vote on one at a time?
Okay.
Do you want to combine them?
Separate motions.
All right. First motion was to support the removal of the median.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second motion?
It was to report back to council if there are any additional costs and the private sector won't agree.
Sure.
I'll second.
House Counsel vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin.
If I, if I may ask a clarifying question, if there are no additional costs, we, we have that endorsement to go ahead and get that process going and get it, perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
What, what is your estimation of a timeframe on that?
Gosh, I think, I, I'm not quite sure. I'm working with NC DOT, it's been a little.
Enough said.
It's been a little slow-moving. So I, I would like to think, Polte's ready to get this done yesterday, so we're really just waiting on that NC DOT approval. So I'm actively working with them. I've, I've submitted the encroachment agreement, so just waiting on that official approval.
Is the Polte Development in Indian Trail?
Yes. Yeah.
Didn't they have a traffic impact study done also?
They were required to put turn lanes in as well, but could not get the right-of-way. Pretty much same issue that, that Epcot had.
All right. Thank you.
If, if I may add, Mr. Short made a couple of excellent points as well. So there's a 27 homes on our side in our town, 50 or so homes.
Fifty-seven.
Across Indian Trail, something like that. The, the idea, a great place would be to connect these two neighborhoods to the Austin Village retail, which is a Harris Teeter and several retail shops and restaurants. The difficulty there are two things. One is the sidewalk, as Mr. Short mentioned, is going to be on the, the other side of the road. And then there's the 12 Mile Creek watershed that floods quite often, that would be a fairly expensive bridge structure to cross with the sidewalk down by Callenwood. So those are two things still in our list to tackle. The, the unfortunate thing is our town doesn't control any of the right-of-way between our pocket neighborhood here and Austin Village. You can see in the green. So while we'll support and advocate and lobby Mr. Short and others, it, it will be contingent upon us all working with Indian Trail to find a way to eventually connect some sidewalks to that retail village. Just wanted to kind of get that out there. We support it, but it's not an easy thing to do.
Hard does that come down? Because I think the neighborhood right across from Austin Village, it has a sidewalk.
Yeah. Sidewalk actually goes all the way down, almost to 12 Mile Creek, Kevin. Let me show the crossing there. Sidewalk stops. Far side of the road, some both sides of the road there, actually.
Comes down.
Stops right at, back up, right on the other side of Revelwood.
Right there, at the very top of the screen.
Yeah. Then it's got to cross 12 Mile Creek somehow there and then there is no more sidewalk anywhere. The property owner with the blue roof there, or green roof, actually, it looks blue there, is a family member of the large development that did not sell into the, excuse me, the residential project. So he's a remaining property owner, they're building around him. So I don't know if there will be a sidewalk in front of his property or not. I'd heard there wasn't earlier.
There is none.
So there's going to be a disjointed nature of connections for a while there, but it's our goal to have a connection all the way down to Austin Village if we can do it. Mr. Short also pointed out, some sort of pedestrian crossing would be ideal for our homes and Stallings to that new sidewalk when it's built. That would be probably like the Hawk Beacon you see at Idowild Road, or excuse me, Stevens Mill Road and Blair Mill Road Creek, which is not cheap, it's a hundred thousand dollar nut to crack too, but just for future reference.
Thank you.
Show, show me where the creek is, 12 Mile Creek.
That creek is. Right about here. Here's, here's our development in question and creek runs right about there.
And it kind of, Kevin, it comes a little bit down this way, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
The back of their, the back of their neighborhood. Yeah.
And can you show on that, this map where the median is?
Median is right here. Right over here where my cursor is.
10 Mile Creek there.
Locks the entrance to the, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All righty. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next up, administrative employee pay study and budget items.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I can kick, or Mayor Pro Tem, I can kick this one off. So just a quick recap to kind of set this up. So each year the board sets a number of strategic priorities and one of the priorities the board set this year was fiscal responsibility and focusing on long-range financial planning. And there are a number of parts to that and one of those is how do we best control expenditures? You'll see a couple of items on the agenda today focused on that, including this one. And one of the things on there is doing a comprehensive pay and benefit study. And so that's what we've done. Typically, when it comes to your employees and setting a competitive pay structure, you want to make sure that you're paying them market because turnover tends to be more expensive than just making sure everybody is paid a fair market. Because if you don't, people will leave, they will go to another place that is paying them a competitive rate and that has a direct effect on the services that we provide to the public. So that's why by doing a pay and, a pay and benefit study, we're able to make sure that we're investing in every money that we spend, that's taxpayer money, we need to make sure we're getting value back and investing. And this is what this is about. So what we've done is we've brought on Mr. David Hill. David has done several recent pay studies, he's an expert at it, including several of our neighbors, including Matthews. And we got good reports and we've had a great experience working with David. And I called Mr. Hill to come up and make a presentation. As David's walking up here, I also want to thank Ms. Karen Reed, our HR Director, for her work on this study. She spent a lot of time on it and as well as the council for your support in doing this. There's two aspects of it. There's one for employees and we also looked at town council stipends as well. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. This time of year, I, I give these kinds of presentations almost every Monday or Tuesday, which means that my voice may or may not make it to the end of my presentation. If I fail to speak loud enough, just let me know. But a pay and classification study, like any project, is just the collection of a lot of data, a lot of information, and then the interpretation of that data. This project of yours, we started right after the beginning of this current fiscal year. We started collecting market data in August and have continued to collect that data, use that data, update the data. But I'll go through an overview of the study. I'll talk about the steps, the process, methodologies of the study. And then we'll, we'll cover some expectations of the study. And in each of these studies, it's to identify the local market. Who, who are those local competitors? Who do you compete against each day? And the focus of the study, as you can see from this slide, is to determine and make recommendations regarding the geographic market placement for the town to support the town's employee recruitment and retention initiatives. So the overview was the identification of the local market and we'll take a look at those, I think, in the next slide. And then in this room, we conducted employee kickoff sessions, orientation sessions. We met with groups of employees to explain to them the purpose of the study, again, the process, the procedure, the expectations that we had of each employee, their participation. Because it was only through their participation that we were able to identify those primary and secondary duties, responsibilities and opportunities that they had, especially looking at levels of authority. A lot of questions that they had to, or answers that they had to provide to us was through a 12-page questionnaire, a position description questionnaire. And in that questionnaire, they explained to us in their own words, in detail, every element of their position. And even in that explanation of each of those elements of their position, we asked them to provide to us the percentage of time that they spent in each of those activities. And that becomes important when we're looking at those similar positions in these other local governments. And in local government, in the state of North Carolina, there are no two positions exactly alike. Perhaps you could think that a, a police officer in Murphy is the same as a police officer in Stallings, who's the same as a police officer in Kill Devil Hills. And for the most part, they are. But in each jurisdiction, there are always 5, 10 or greater percent of other duties and responsibilities that every employee has. And even in law enforcement, there are local ordinances here that don't exist in other places. When we're looking at positions here, comparing those two positions in other local governments, if we can get about an 85% match of those primary duties and responsibilities, that's about as close to apples to apples as you can get. Part of your study was, as Alex mentioned, the, the benefit component and we'll talk a little bit about that. But the process is collection of data, reviewing that data, interpreting the data. But the process is, collection of data, reviewing that data, interpreting the data, making those comparisons, coming back, meeting with Alex and Karen, working through the data, making some interpretations of the data as it concerns internal relationships, internal equity. So, we have market data, we have internal equity issues that we take a look at. And then I make determinations about what pay grade each of your positions should be in. And that's a direct comparison to the market, a police officer being compared to other police officers, a police sergeant being compared to other police sergeants, and so forth. And then, I spend about 85% of my time focused on just the positions, with that regard to individual employees. But then, in the last 10%, 15%, 20% of my time is where I take a look at individual employees, and that's where the pay portion comes in. But 85% of this process is working with just the positions, the classifications. At the very beginning of the study, I asked Karen to send me an employee census, give me all the information, basically, that's public information about every employee, their name, their department they work in, position title, employment date, date they've been placed in their current position, salary, everything really that's public information, because I'm collecting that same information from all these other local governments. But from that spreadsheet, that initial spreadsheet that I got from Karen, I developed some initial graphs and slides that provide some basic benchmarking information for me at the beginning of the study. It gives me a picture of what your workforce looks like at the beginning of the study. And as a backdrop to that, I take a look at a lot of different data points, and when I'm looking at a mature workforce, and my definition of a mature workforce is that you have an average years of employment between eight and 10 years. And if you have a mature workforce, and if the sample size is large enough, whichever element of that workforce I'm measuring, the outcome of that measurement should look like the standard bell curve. And in a mature workforce, and again, that's eight to 10 years of average employment, I should be able to find about 2/3 of your employees in the middle, 1/3 of that bell Beginning with the next slides, I have a technical inability to recreate a bell curve. My bell curves look like, somewhat like St. Louis arches. So, anyway, just pretend that that's a bell curve. The bell curve represents a 20-year career. The first data point that I'm measuring here is length of service, how long have employees been working here? The average length of employment is 5.13 years. Now, you can see from the 20-year arch, you do have a couple of employees who've been with you for an extended period of time. But you can see with the majority of those bars are located on the graph, over on the far left side. So, down in the bottom-left of the chart, you can see that you've got almost 35% of your employees who've been with you less than two years. You've got almost 70% of your employees who've been with you less than five years. And then 86% have been with you less than 10 years. So, when I look at that, that's a typical local government chart. Of all the studies I do, if I was showing you those average charts from every other local government in the state of North Carolina, it looks just like that. The next thing I measure is, how long have employees been in their current position? And again, my St. Louis arch represents a 10-year career, because you did not have anybody who's been in their current position longer than 2013. So, you've got 58% of your employees have been in their positions less than two years. And then you can see the rest of the information there. 86% have been in their position less than five years. The next data element that I took a look at is, where are employee salaries in relation to their minimum and maximum salary of their pay grade range? So, then when I take a look at that chart, after having looked at chart number one and chart number two, where most of the bars are on the left side, you can see that there's a very good distribution of salaries in this chart. Even though your employees, for the most part, have been with you a relatively short period of time, they've been in a position a relatively short period of time, you can see that there's an excellent distribution of salaries. So, when I look at that, my initial interpretation is, there's a disconnect between this slide and the first two slides. In the first two slides, you see all the bars over on the far-left side. When I get to this chart, I typically see a lot of bars on the left side. You, however, have an excellent distribution of salaries. Now, again, when I take a look at that, my first interpretation is, their salary grade ranges aren't competitive to the market. They're having to bring employees in with salaries further up in the grade range to be competitive. Or they bring employees in, and they've got a pretty well-established methodology of advancing salaries. So, those are interpretations of this data. So, when you see the bottom-left, you, and this is a great indication of, I typically... And I have an eye problem, a tearing problem. It is not because of my presence here. Tonight.
We'll do that.
When I take a look at this chart, I'm just seeing, trying to figure out how do salaries get distributed that way? So, when we start taking a look at the comparisons, then we get into some of the details. So, this, these are the local governments that we collected data from. These are the local governments that we compared each of your positions to. Now, what do we do with that information? Now, I'm not going to stand here before you this evening and go through every one of your positions. I'll just police officer as an example, because everybody, almost everybody has a law enforcement officer, whether that's a sheriff's deputy or a police officer. Every one of your positions, every one of your classifications, has a worksheet that looks very similar to this. Now, this one just happens to be for police officer. A police sergeant has one, police chief has one, HR director has one. When I do studies, I collect data on every position, including the manager. And in your study, I also collected market data on compensation paid to elected officials in each of those local governments. And I think most of that information is provided to you in some handouts tonight. But I'm using police officer just as the example, not to draw attention to police officer, but this provides to me the basic raw data. So, for this particular position, for each of these local governments, what you see to the right of each of those local government names is the pay grade range that they have that particular position in. And then, the column titled "Actual" is the average salary for each police officer in each of these jurisdictions. The next column is the range, that's just the measurement of, how far is the maximum salary from the minimum salary? As you can see, some over 55%, 62%, so forth. The column titled "CR" stands for comp ratio. That's a relative position measurement of where is my salary in relation to the midpoint of my salary grade range. And midpoint really is not the correct term for, within salary administration, the midpoint, actually, back to my mature workforce definition, between eight and 10 years, that midpoint is actually the market value. That's where you typically would find the salaries of employees who've been in their position eight to 10 years. Police officer usually is not a good example to show that, because this is an entry-level position in, to law enforcement. Employees, police officers don't stay in that position typically long enough to get salaries up to the midpoint. They're promoted to the next position in the department. But the comp ratio is something that I will come back to at the end, because part of my recommendations are going to be based on comp ratio. Then, a different way of measuring where salaries are is percent above minimum.
Pardon me. Not leaving because of you.
Okay.
He has a work commitment he needs to get to, so Stephen, thank you.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmen Reiers.
Second. All in favor? Bye, Stephen.
So, everything above the blue line is the market. Immediately below the blue line is where you have this position of police officer, salary grade P-17, which has a minimum salary of 57,569, a midpoint of 71,2, a max of 84,9, average salary for a police officer. And again, this is a snapshot from about the first part of August. So, this is just, again, a snapshot of your workforce at the beginning of the study. Average salary for Stallings police officer was 61,0239. So, then immediately below the Stallings data is the average and the median of the market. So, when I take a look at, and I'm measuring minimum salaries to minimum salaries, the local governments that you see listed there that we compared you to don't have what's known as a hiring rate. Stallings has a hiring rate. That methodology of bringing employees to work in a hiring rate, then advancement to the minimum, works well for Stallings, and it is my recommendation that we continue using your current pay grade plan with the hiring rate, minimum, midpoint, and maximum. But in my measurement, against each of these other local governments, I'm measuring the minimum salary, with that regard to what the hiring rate is. But as you can see, your minimum salary for police officers is 57,5, the average for the market is 53,7, which is, Stallings is 7.1% greater than the average of the market. The median is 54,2, so your minimum salary for this particular classification is 6% above the market. But looking over to the right side, your average salary of 61,2, you're 2 point, you're 1.2% below market on actual salary, 4.6 below the median. And then, the handouts that you have are copies of other positions and classifications, and their comparison to the market. And again, I'm just using police officer tonight as an example to give an explanation of what the data looks like and what I look at. So, when I'm looking at the average data, the median data, I'm taking a look at your hiring rate, your hiring rate is a rate that is 5% below minimum. And typically, an employee comes to work here at the hiring rate, at the conclusion, or the successful conclusion of their probationary period, their salary is advanced to the minimum. So, your hiring rate for this particular position is right in line with everybody else's minimum, so my recommendation is that police officer remain in its same pay grade, that there is no change. You are market competitive with this particular position. So, in your handout, again, are those comparisons to each of the other positions, and again, I'm just using police officer tonight as the example of what the data is and how I use that data. Now, part of your study included a benefits review, and we sent out a nine-page questionnaire to each of the 11 local governments included in your study. We received responses from seven of them, about a 64% response. But from that, we were, we asked each of them to provide responses to us in practically every benefit area, employee benefits. And that includes, just for example, holidays, sick and vacation leave, recognition of prior service, hours of work, and you can see the different things that we collected up there. And then Karen took that data and began comparisons to your specific benefit plan. But from that analysis, and again, the purpose of all of this is to determine the best market positioning place for Stallings to recruit and retain employees. So, recommendation regarding the pay plan, the pay study component of the study, is each of your positions compared to the market, and from that analysis, I came back with a recommendation of what pay grade each position should be in. So, my recommendation for consideration is to assign each of your classifications, each of your positions, to that pay grade that's supported and is commensurate with the comparisons to the market. And then, comparing employee, or recommending adjustments for employee salaries. In that third chart that we looked at, that great distribution of salaries that you have, and then just using police officer as the example, in most of your positions, you are very competitive with the market. But my recommendation is, based on that comp ratio, based on length of service, and this particular recommendation that I'm giving to you for consideration is a recommendation that gives equal weight of recognition of how long have employee, how long has an employee been working for you, as well as how long have they been in their current position? So, this particular option provides equal weight to length of service, time and position. And it's based on the comp ratio model, and again, comp ratio is that relative position to the midpoint. So, the comp ratio model, again, is just, it's just a progressive model. You can see zero as being the first year, that's a brand-new employee who's been with you less than one year. And then, the 0.5 is that point where they've completed their probation period, and then they move up to the minimum. So, the 0.8 that you see there is that relative position on your pay grade range, minimum salary. And then, as my salary advances across the range, I'm going to be finally at that highlighted area. And that's in my eighth year, combination time, length of service, time and position. And the 1.0000 said differently is 100%. So, if my salary's at midpoint, then I'm 100% at midpoint. So, my model provides that opportunity, that the model takes a look at that employee's salary, where is it in relation to the midpoint, how long has that employee been working here, how long they've been in their position? And then, it comes back with a recommendation about where along the pay grade range each of their salaries should be. So, working through that model, working through employee salaries, working through their projected pay grade range of the position that they hold, the implementation cost would be approximately $98,000. And 77,400 of that is actual salaries, almost 21% of that is payroll-associated costs. That's the FICA retirement, 401Ks, and so forth. And your payroll-associated costs, like most every other local government, is about 27% of salaries. Now, this...
I hate to interrupt, because I'm... The comp ratio, equal weight, years of service, that mean that if someone moves into our town and serving five years in another... Five years? and serving five years in another, five years of service, that would be equal to five years of working for our town? Am I missing?
No. However, that's conversation for following year, three years from now, to become competitive, to remain competitive. And a lot of jurisdictions do use that model to determine a brand-new employee's starting salary. But for you, that, in my opinion, is a conversation for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal years. But quite a few of the local governments I work with use that model to, not as an exact, but if I'm coming to you with five years, if I'm that police officer who's coming to you, just making this up, coming to you from Matthews, I've got five years of relevant experience, what's the value of my five years' experience? And a lot of local governments do use that model that, okay, we're going to take a look at that comp ratio model, somebody with five years of experience hears where their salary should be. So it is, it is a tool. Most of the local governments I work with who use that model don't use it as an exact, that's just part of the tools that they use. There certainly, some of them will not bring somebody from the outside in making more than somebody who's been there for a while. So those are some of the kinds of things that you also have to put in to those considerations.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. The cost also is not a definite number. You're always, until final implementation, going to have employees come and leave, promoted, move to a different position, different salaries. But this is an estimated cost of what it would cost, and I think Alex and Karen have broken that further down in when the implementation cost, or the implementation would be. Now, the benefits review, here is recognition of prior service. So my first bullet, if you're recruiting employees who have five, ten years of local government experience, the kind of experience that you would want to bring here, right now, your policy does not recognize any of that prior experience. So here, perhaps, is one of the first steps in recognition of prior service for the benefit of allowing that person that you're trying to recruit, who has that five years of experience, to bring that five years of experience here and have it recognized for vacation accrual. So currently, there is no recognition of prior service. So my recommendation, coming from the benefits review, is to propose that you put together a policy that recognizes the prior service or that vacation accrual. One of the other areas that you are not competitive to the market in group life insurance. So my recommendation here, you currently do provide life insurance, but that policy has a value of thirty thousand dollars. Most every other local government that we looked at in this geographic area, that minimum has, provides insurance that's equal to typically one times an employee's salary, instead of a flat thirty thousand dollars. The other area in benefits is if my regular schedule causes me to work on a holiday, and whether my work schedule is for eight hours a day, or ten hours a day, or twelve hours a day, my additional compensation for working that holiday is to receive eight hours of vacation pay. When we looked at all the other local governments, and there were a lot of different ways of compensating employees for working holidays, but most of them either offer dollar-for-dollar or time-and-a-half actual pay for working the holiday, in addition to working the holiday. Others use compensation or comp time as the compensation. My recommendation to you, I'm proposing that you consider that your current policy right now is, again, without regard to what my actual scheduled hours are, whether it's eight, ten, or twelve, that I get an initial eight hours of vacation for having worked on the holiday. My proposal is that whatever my work schedule is, becomes the compensation, still a vacation, but if I'm working a ten-hour schedule, then that additional compensation should be ten hours of vacation. If I'm working a twelve-hour schedule, the additional compensation should be twelve hours, because my working day is either ten, eight, ten, or twelve. So if I'm a ten- or twelve-hour employee, then if I'm going to take a day off, I've got eight hours of vacation I can use, but I've got to come up with two more hours from somewhere, or four more hours from somewhere. So here, I'm just merely saying, whatever my work schedule is, whether that's eight, ten, twelve, or whatever it might be, that that employee receive the commensurate number of vacation hours as additional compensation. So, that was just a quick overview, a lot of detailed information that you'll find in your handouts, an opportunity to answer any questions that you have tonight. But certainly, I think Alex, an opportunity to perhaps come back at a later meeting to address any questions that you might have after you've had an opportunity to take a look at all the information.
And your recommendation on third one, go back one slide if you don't mind, last sentence proposed hour. That you're, were you saying the town should provide hour-for-hour compensation for those who work on holiday? The town should choose to go a route, or a comp route, or it could be either, or the employee decides? What do you find mostly flexibility is the best?
Ultimate decision, of course, lies with the town. And I'm not, and I'm not stepping so far out that I'm saying provide additional compensation. This was just an area that stood out in that you provide eight hours of vacation. And if I'm a police officer, or an employee who's working more than eight hours, I'm still going to get paid for working my shift, but when I get ready to take off a shift, I'm taking off ten hours, I'm taking off twelve hours, but all I've got for working that holiday was eight hours.
My last question, on the cost side, maybe one slide up, I can't remember how many it was. Okay, so, so none of the benefits below this slide had a cost, you could do the group term, that would, you could-
Correct.
-that one out pretty quickly, but the other one?
Yeah, the only, the only additional cost would be, whatever that additional cost would be, to change the life insurance coverage.
Yeah, and I guess productivity, which is hard to-
Thank you very much, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to reiterate, what's in the memo, what we're thinking of the processes, we've given you a lot of information, it's okay if you feel like you're drinking from a fire hose, it's a lot of data. So next step would be for the council to review it, look over it. If you have any questions, we would ask that you send us the questions, just email them to us by February twelfth, and what staff will do is we'll work with Mr. Hill, and we'll come up with answers to all those questions, because the question that Councilmember Hall asks, I think the answers will be relevant for everybody, so it'll be helpful for everybody to see those, so please give us your answers to those questions, or your questions, excuse me, questions by February the twelfth.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, for a second, I have something that, a month or two ago, was brought up by the council and asked us to explore the feasibility of it, look at what other local governments provide, and we thought that providing this, because during the conversation about the pay study, would be relevant, because it is a benefit and it's about attracting and retaining competent staff to deliver public services.
Yes. Thank you. First, let's talk a little bit about our current policy. Right now, we offer short-term disability, and that gives the mother about six to eight weeks, depending on the delivery, and then in conjunction with that, we do FMLA. In reviewing the surrounding government agencies, we found that there is an average of six weeks of paid parental leave that most of them do give. Adopting a policy would provide a valuable benefit to our employees and strengthen the town's position in attracting and retaining employees. We do have a young staff, so that would be a great benefit. Typically, mothers take about twelve weeks. They use the short-term disability that does pay sixty percent of their salary, and then they'll take additional time using accrued sick leave. Now, fathers usually take four to six weeks, and a lot of times, they use accrued sick leave as well. Just going through this, as you will see, the average employee for six weeks would be a little over eleven thousand per employee, okay? If we had four cases annually, that would be about forty-four thousand. However, since most of our employees are currently using accrued sick leave, the town would possibly only need to cover half of the cases, which would be a little over twenty-two Staff is requesting approval to establish a six-week paid parental leave policy with the intention of making it retroactive to the beginning of the year. Any questions?
Looking for a vote tonight?
I am asking for approval to establish the policy.
So, if, I guess the idea is, if, does it sound right? Does it sound good? Does it meet what you, is, that we would go back and draft the more formal policy to come back and bring to you?
It would be retroactive to when?
To the first of the year.
But it's an insurance claim?
Yes, it's short-term disability, so it's just for the mothers.
And the-
And FMLA.
Instead of doing an insurance claim?
No, we would still, you know, the mothers would probably still do the short-term disability, and that would give them six to eight weeks, depending on the delivery. That's a benefit that we do pay for, for all our employees, so we would encourage them to take that. And then, after that, we would give them that six weeks paid leave also.
Councilmember Hall, just to add something, the short-term disability, that's not one-hundred percent of pay, that's sixty percent.
Yes, yes. But it does, it does help, because most mothers take at least twelve weeks. Well, the insurance company is paying sixty percent of their salary, so it does help the town if we have to, you know, pay somebody extra to cover a shift or something like that.
On the competition side, did you do a compare saw with, with market area, Karen?
So, yes, yes.
Let me study this real quick.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So what you're asking to do is create the shell, and then we'll fill in the numbers?
I'm asking approval to establish a six weeks paid parental leave policy. As you'll see, you know, you've got eight weeks, you've got six weeks, you've got twelve weeks, four weeks, six weeks, so we're asking for six weeks for our employees.
Just expound on the mayor pro tem's question, so you'll draft the policy, the policy would come back to this board for approval?
Yes, yes.
If this feels like, and maybe where David's going, is this feels like a budget decision as well as a, in a budget sort of season planning now, so you-
Understand.
-give us an area where you would draft the policy-
Yes.
-six-week paid parental leave, but the council might say, in the context of a budget, no, not going to do that this year, or less of a benefit. That's giving you the okay to start the shell policy, says-
Yes.
-let me just show you what it looks like in writing?
Yes.
Yeah, so if we got to go ahead, this looks good, we're liking what we hear, we would go and we would, I mean, we've got the, I think, more than the bones of a policy here, it's a fairly good amount of detail. We would come back with a more formalized policy for y'all to consider, and then you could, it would be appropriate for y'all to approve it, it would be appropriate for y'all to table it until the budget decision, whatever y'all feel is most appropriate.
So the disability, that, like, what people are doing, is that something new, the short-term disability?
Yeah. Not really new, it's been out for a while, no. We've actually had it here for a long time, so it's not, it's not new. We did that to give them extra time, so that they don't have to use their accrued sick leave for the whole time they want to be out, because you know what happens, you have a baby, things happen, you're going to be out with them, you use up all your time when they come home, you know, that's not good either. So, we have offered the short-term disability for a long time. And, you know, do look at it, and that I am saying that you could possibly, it could possibly cost the town extra money, but right now, most of our employees have a good bit of sick time, so they're using sick time, so we're already paying for it.
If you don't mind, go back to that section, I did get a little bit lost.
Yes, I understand.
Explain it well, we got it in here well.
Okay.
It looks like this, but in actuality, it's probably going to be this, talk about that.
Yes, okay, so, most of our employees use accrued sick leave, okay?
Why would they, though, if they get sick leave?
Well, okay, so, if they do short-term disability, okay, they can only get six to eight weeks, depending on the delivery.
And only the female?
And only the female, okay? And then, most of our females want to take at least twelve weeks, okay? So they're taking that six to eight weeks- So they're taking that six to eight weeks from the short-term disability, the difference, they're using their accrued sick leave. So the town's paying and out anyway, because they're getting paid for that part of it, okay? Now, the males, the fathers, cannot apply for short-term disability, so whatever they take, they're using their sick leave.
Are you required to take short-term disability? That's where I'm confused. If, if, if a young female is going out on leave, might she choose to use accrued sick leave and this leave for 100% of her salary through the 12 weeks?
Yes, she could, but she, she would be smarter to use short-term disability and this leave, because she can use accrued sick leave to make up the difference of the 40%. So she wouldn't have to use as much of her sick leave...
That's what I was missing.
For that, for that time that she's getting paid for. Yes. Because that's paying 60%, the town would only be paying the 40%.
So who decides? You said it would be maybe six weeks and maybe eight weeks, who?
The insurance company. And usually, if it's a C-section, if it's just a normal delivery, it's six weeks. If it's a C-section, it's eight weeks. And, and if, if there's like some kind of complications or something like that with the mother, then it could be a little bit longer. But, but that, that's out of our hands, the insurance company decides that.
Questions?
Got it.
I'm, I'm okay having you draft the policy. It's a, it's a, it's a good benefit, without. Have concerns about heading into the budget season and approving new payroll, market rates and adjustments. I think this benefit may not have even been on the radar until Mr. Ayers brought it up, correct? So it wasn't on our thinking until Mr. Ayers brought it up and talked through that. So I'm good with you drafting, I'd be happy to make the motion to draft the policy.
Okay, yes.
Second.
House Counsel vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got the next one, Alex.
Great, I'm happy to do it, and Ms. Cox, I'd ask you to add anything that I missed. So we've had a couple requests from, from our town attorney and from our land use attorney to increase the hourly rate. It seems to be a bit below market, based on the information submitted. They, they asked for this several months ago, but I asked them and they kindly held off. I wanted to present this kind of in the same context of the pay study, it seems somewhat related. Rate for Ms. Cox has been requested go from 225 to 275, and the rate for Mr. McCarley to go from 300 an hour to 325 an hour. Cox, is there anything you'd like?
No, a lot of this is my fault, right? I haven't raised it since 2018. Obviously, everything is more expensive than it was in 2018, so I should have done this a long time ago, but I feel like I'm a better attorney than I am business person. And I just don't, I don't like asking people for money, but I felt like it certainly was time to do so. And so called around, emailed various municipalities around us to get the hourly rate, and a lot of the attorneys were kind of floored when I told them what I charged. And so that's how I, how I came up with my request, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll ask the same question. It's on the agenda, it's information, I love you, you know that, you're wonderful. Vote tonight on the, on this, or is this information we carry with us into the next budget season?
It's up to y'all, really, whether you want to approve it now. Yeah, good question, so I asked, I asked Ms. Williams to run an analysis for us. Ms. Williams, do you mind sharing what you found?
Sure. There, are you okay, just be right here.
Come up to the podium, please, ma'am, thank you.
So I did look at what we had budgeted in current year, to go ahead and start this before July 1 with the next budget. For Ms. Cox, based on what we have paid her year-to-date and what we have budgeted, her invoices tend to vary in hours. The average is about 15, but it could be, you know, 10 to 30, it just depends. As long as those invoices stayed around 20 hours for the remainder of the calendar year, we have the budget to cover her increase now. As far as the land planning attorney, we budgeted, I think, based on prior history and have used that attorney more in the past, so we definitely have more than enough to cover that one. And if something came up where we needed to pay Ms. Cox more than what is in the current budget, we could always do an ABO and move money from that land planning, from, from planning's budget over to the administration budget to cover the additional costs. So we do have the money to go ahead and cover it. And then obviously, when we're going into the next budget year, which we'll be meeting with y'all soon about, we would definitely just factor those costs into that budget.
Average amount of hours Ms. Cox works rests on a month, you said 10, 15?
About 15 would be the average. So that was based on, you know, July through December.
I'm, I'm, personally, I'm comfortable making that motion. Ms. Cox is, and I would say this if she weren't sitting here too, is a little bit of pressure.
She's looking right at you.
I know. Well, I, I think it's fair to say that I trust her work, that she's got comp hours that are greater than she's being paid, she's not raising her wages. Her fault, I agree. But she does give us really good expertise and work, so I'm happy to make that motion to make this effective tonight. Could be less than other places, because we are a great board to work for, and we're very friendly to her, so. I'll make the motion to increase, or to accept her proposal, if that's the right words.
Both of them?
I'll second it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. McCarley as well, I think we use him quite less.
275 for Melanie.
So there's a motion on the floor to accept both?
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.
Favor, or that is all in favor?
So we decide we're going to do it now?
Yeah.
We just did.
But, oh, for now, okay.
That one's done.
So just for 15 minutes, hours average of 15, that's 45.
Yeah.
Just, just over.
Good enough, yeah.
Thank you.
The Town Tech?
What?
Town Tech?
No, CIP increase. Alex, you doing that one too?
Sure, be happy to, and I'd ask Ms. Nichols to correct me where I screw up. So one of the things, we talked earlier this meeting, you heard me say, one of the council's priorities for the year was fiscal responsibility and doing long-term fiscal planning. And one of the things we saw with the COVID is, we just had these massive jumps in inflation for a few years. And it really, those kind of jumps, if we continue to see those, it just really can throw a torpedo in the side of the town's budget and make it difficult to kind of keep services going. So one of the things the board asked us to do was to look and draft a CPI cap increase for employees, so that at any given year, CPI increases for staff wouldn't be above a certain amount. So we also wanted to balance that with making sure, hey, if CPI goes up, that could, there's a reason for that, and that has an effect on employees, right? So we need to make sure we're, we're adjusting accordingly. And so what staff are recommending is a 5% cap on the maximum CPI increase for staff each year.
Say that again?
Sure.
5%?
So staff are recommending approval of the policy that caps the CPI increase for town employees at 5% for a year. So if the CPI for the year, when I'm talking about CPI, I'm talking about inflation data that the government sets. If CPI was 3%, the CPI increase per our policy for staff would be 3%. If it was 5%, it would be 5%. If it was 7%, the increase to employees would be 5%. So that's what we mean, and I think that was the board's goal when they asked us to draft that policy. And about 5% feels like the right number. Questions, comments, or criticisms?
Just, just round that out for us, I'm sorry, is that okay? Round that out for us, there's Merit, there's CPI, and then there's something else, walk us through this.
Yes, thank, thank you, Councilmember, that's helpful. So we have several components to our, our pay system. The underlying foundation, the floor, if you will, is the pay and classifications system. Now, on that floor sits what I like to think of as a three-legged stool. So one of those legs on that stool is CPI. So as inflation happens and adjusts the cost of living for everyone, including our employees, we increase salaries based on this governmental number of what they increase for, one leg of the stool. The second leg of the school stool is the pay step increase. That's 2% every year. That's to make sure, we just saw Mr. Hill's bell curve, that we continue to increase salaries as people gain more experience in their job. And then the third component, third leg of the stool, if you will, is a performance-based number, which we're working on our performance appraisal system, and there's a 1% bonus that will ultimately be performance bonus. That's the third leg of the stool. So again, the foundation is the pay and benefit study, and the three-legged stool, it's the CPI increases, the, the pay step, and the performance base. So if you take away any of those things, things can get weird, we can start having unintended consequences, but all those contribute to having a effective system to attract and retain good people. Now, I think what this comes into, it's the reality of, well, you just can't pay whatever forever, right? We have taxpayer money, that is not limitless, and we need to be good stewards. And so this policy is trying to cap one leg of that stool, the CPI increases to 5% per fiscal. Now, it's 5%, employees, in theory, could still get a 7% increase, which is generous, in my opinion. And so I don't think it hamstrings, especially for its, for a one-year, so. And I will say this, is that even, though this is a policy, the board can always set aside the policy and make a different decision, if y'all feel like this is constraining us or hurting the town's ability to attract and retain good people.
Are we supposed to be having a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that we up the policy cap to CPI at 5%.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up, Council Technology, there is no, I'm bringing this up because my iPad is five years old, five and a half years old, and it's not, every time I have an OS update, I gotta delete stuff on it, so I can have enough capacity to do the... So, given as, as it's old, I started looking at replacement iPads. I don't know how many of you have a town-issued iPad. Yeah, this is a town-issued iPad. Lot for town stuff, but Alex and Erin looked at it and said, we don't really have a policy. No, or, how'd you explain that? We have, we had one when we got this for me, but we don't really have...
Don't have a policy about getting them or...
And they're not in any budget at all. So the new ones are kind of, not super expensive, but they can range up to, the one I was looking at was, with the keyboard and a pen, was about $900. You can get a cheap one for probably $500 or $600 with a pen. What I was looking at was one that'll last five or six years, like this one did. But I either approve that tonight, or we ask staff to come up with a policy, or both, to come up with a policy for how do we supply, and what's the replacement plan for council-used, town-issued tech? I think Alex had mentioned it doesn't necessarily have to be an iPad, if you have another device that you'd like. Laptop, maybe, if that's your choice. Whatever. That's kind of where I'm at with this, addition to the agenda tonight. Question?
I would be more in favor of the stipend, or my only concern is when you get into the town-issued technology, that the town has to monitor it, has to be central responsible for it. And I, I think this, again, the stipend, it's to... Do what you, makes you most comfortable. So I would be more in favor of the stipend rather than... Very careful with that stuff.
Years ago, see, I've been on since 2015, not take an iPad, as, as was offered at the time, because the technology policy that town has said you can't use it for your own business, and I was self-employed, and I, the device I had, I used for everything. I didn't want to have a separate iPad for work and a separate iPad that I could use for anything, I mean, town stuff, and then the other one. The policy was revised, and you could use it for anything, basically, you're handed an iPad, do whatever you want with it, for town purposes or otherwise, the technology policy didn't have that gap. So then I said, all right, I'll take one, because the one I did have was also five years old, and it was town-issued one, and about time to replace it, in my opinion. Stipend might work too, but the policy I was getting at was, it kind of overrode that, the town doesn't, town doesn't maintain this, if it breaks, I guess they might, but it's pretty robust, it doesn't, hasn't...
I, I just, yeah, I would be more in favor of, I, I just like the town to be... Because anytime you take on, we're giving it to you, but you can use it however you want. I would hate for that to come back from the town. Town-issued iPad was used for, I'm not saying anyone here will, I hope, I hope no one does, but you know, it's just one of those... It's an additional layer of separation.
What if there was a stipend at, for each four-year term? One stipend of whatever dollar amount it is, each four-year term, at work?
I'd be, I'd be supportive of that.
Motion?
I'd, it's a good question, I don't know that I'm ready to make a motion tonight. I, I do think maybe, I'm sure many council members would take advantage. not sure many council members would take advantage of a stipend. By tech, maybe they would. It feels like a policy is what we're after.
Sure, staff, staff would be happy to draft a policy, listening to the conversation that was had and trying to kind of address all the issues and come back with a functional policy for the board to consider.
That's fine.
Yeah.
With that, I mean, it's, it works mostly okay, but I'm in.
That belongs to the town, it needs to be upgraded. But I have to delete a lot of stuff because? No, you didn't do it, but I just?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I think what we're missing is some guidance. It would also be helpful.
And actually, in the pay study, it's kind of interesting to look at what's provided the council members for other towns. It's like, wow, we, not only are we bottom of the barrel on our pay, we're basically not existing with a technology or any other extra for, for that. Anyhow, Alex, you have our consensus and we appreciate that. Next up, if anyone wants to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all, appreciate you ever coming out.